Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our December meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. So wonderful to see almost every chair filled tonight. We're glad you're here to join us. This is a very special night for us. This is when we say goodbye to those who have served on the council for a number of years and welcome those who will continue to serve in the several years ahead. So this is a special night for us and thank you for being here to share it with us. Those of you watching at home on TV6, welcome in the comfort of your living room with your feet propped up, hopefully with a beverage of your choice. Those of you watching on LewisvilleNC.net around the world, we're glad to have you here joining us. And Ryan Moser says that we're on Facebook tonight. He is nodding reluctantly, but we'll see how that one works out. But anyway, however you're joining us here tonight, we're glad to have you. We will start this evening with our American Legion Post 522. Norman, you're the post commander. Would you introduce your color guard before they come up?
I'm Ed Smith. Welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Gruy.
Marcy Gallman.
I'm Fred Franklin.
Also with us this evening is our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Beau Health. Please stand and join us if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
God our Father, we give you thanks for your many blessings of life. Tonight, we give you thanks for jobs well done. We give you thanks for the promise of a bright future with new leadership. Be with us during the course of this meeting and take us all safely home at the end of it. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. Thank you. Continue our meeting with our customary roll call of council members. Hi, I'm Councilman Jeff Singer.
Good evening, I'm Ed Smith. Welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Gruy.
Marcy Gallman.
I'm Fred Franklin.
Also with us this evening is our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Beau Health. Thank you, Beau, for that wonderful invocation. It's always nice when you're able to do that. Back on the camera, our technical expert tonight, public works, acting public works director, Mayan Moser. Sounds pretty good, doesn't it, buddy? Yeah, good. I'm glad you're doing a great job. Our corporal PJ Stringer is here to protect us and keep us safe this evening. Welcome PJ, good to see you. Our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker, and our town planning director Stacy Tolbert. Am I missing anybody? I think that's everybody. That's gotta be everybody because we don't have any more people. Very good. Counsel, we do just have a couple of small changes on the agenda. We've added under unfinished business, two items. One is a presentation by Keith Carline from ADW Architects who's going to go over our design that has been selected through the process that we've been engaged in for the last year. And then we're going to ask for your approval of that design and comments so that we can move forward and begin to get down to the serious business of trying to figure out how much is this going to cost and if we're going to afford it. Keith is nodding at me, so I'm confident that we're going to be able to do it. Any other changes, additions or subtractions? Ms. Walker?
So far, none.
Okay, well, you're running out of time.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, will entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Hank, you have the consent agenda, please.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of five items. First is Resolution 2019079 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for October 2019. The approval of council briefing and action minutes for November 7th, 2019. Approval of council meeting minutes, November 14th, 2019. Resolution 2019080, accepting the resignation of Leslie Bortow from the Lewisville Utilities Committee. And finally, Resolution 2019082, accepting the resignation of Charles Durier from the Lewisville Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. We handle them with our financial matters, our minutes, and occasionally we'll do a resignation from some of our committees. We take them as a group unless any council member individually would like to pull one off and discuss it in further, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Singer makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Counsel, we don't have any other business until we get down to our unfinished business for this evening, and I'd like to introduce at this time, Mr. Keith Carline, who is going to give us an update. I introduced him as beginning. Are we there? Same agenda?
Okay.
Ms. Mock is giving me that look like I skipped something, so after four years, I know that look well. Thank you, Keith.
All right, well, it's kind of an exciting night. We've come a long way. We started out meeting with various groups, meeting with council and staff, different stakeholder stakeholders for the new community center building. And then we've had several community input sessions, three to be exact, I think, at least with the architects. I think there's been more, quite a bit more before that. What we did, well, it's probably a week or two ago, came up and had some schematic designs that we presented. That had come after we'd worked out kind of a space needs and looked at budgeting, had community input on all that, make sure we had the kind of the right spaces in the building. And so we had gotten to the point where we were ready to develop site plans and floor plans and then exterior designs of the building. We wanted to come up here with several different options, so we actually had four different exteriors and three different plans. And we looked at that and got, received some great comments from various parties, council members, community members. And I think we had, we ended up doing a presentation of all the different designs and basically had a vote at the end of the evening to see what the predominant feeling was and what was speaking to the most people. The option C that we had, which is located over here, was the unanimous winner. There were some votes for some others, but this definitely took the night. And so we've got the floor plan and site plan and exterior design that we presented the other night was well received. We also had a fly-around animation that we presented for all the different options, which is very useful, maybe to see a little more than just a couple still views. One of the, you know, one of the items on this one that we wanted to make sure of was where it was going to come in on budget. It was a little less compact than some of the other options, but it provided some benefits to that as well, being able to maybe coordinate off part of the building at some points. So we've actually done a little bit of some massaging to it. We've taken some of the input we got on some door locations and a few other things that were mentioned, a little wet area off of the lobby, things like that. We've updated the plans a little bit. There'll be more on that to come. But we also worked a little bit on the exterior to see if there were a few things we could develop a little further and maybe be a little more efficient on to help with our cost estimate that's coming up. We did do an updated fly animation. If you all would like to see that, we can play that really quick and then take any questions, comments you have, and then if you guys feel comfortable moving forward, we'd like to be able to be released to go ahead and get the cost estimate done. And then we can bring that back to you with any price options and whatnot.
Very good. Before we see the animation, any questions for Keith? Great. Chief Marie, would you do me a favor and take that slider and pull it down on the wall there? I think that's the light above us. Ah, there we go.
Let's tell us what we're seeing, Keith, as we go through this. So let me just try to pause it in a few spots here.
I'm going to let you sit here.
Yeah.
I'm not touching it, you know what happened.
Let me back that up just a little bit to orient everybody that hasn't seen this. I'll just pause it there. So basically, if you follow the mouse here, the highway's out in front and Jack Warren Park is located over in this location. So your current entry is about in the same location as this driveway when you drive back to the park. Mary Alice Warren's house is located up in this area with some nice big trees. So we've kind of developed the new building around that area, sort of that's on the high spot of the property. So we'll go ahead and just kind of flow through this a little bit. So this is just a view, kind of overview, so you'll fly around and see the building from all different sides. And again, we've made a few modifications that should provide some cost savings as we get into the estimating. And we have some things broken out that'll be priced as options, so when we come back with the prices, there'll probably be some decision making that'll need to happen as to what you can afford and which pieces we'll make sure we're incorporating. That's sort of the main entry to the building, the main lobby. So you have the kind of large meeting room spaces off to the left, that's sort of the main gathering spaces in the center there. Lots of large windows opening into a big gathering area off of the large meeting rooms. You get a lot of natural light coming into that part of the building. This is on the back side. And so this is kind of on the backside of the main entrance. We have a few things we're pricing as options, covered porch here, fireplace, whether it's inside and outside, we'll have some pricing on that. Like a nice little trellis area outside of the big meeting room spaces, so we'll be pricing some of those as options and we'll see where the overall pricing is coming in.
Oh, come on. Thank you, Keith. We're still at roughly 12,000 square feet?
Yeah, we were actually, we were able to whittle that down just a little bit and keep all the main spaces the same size, so that will only help in the cost estimate. So definitely, we found some efficiencies, so that's good.
Council members, any questions for Keith or comments?
Looks fantastic.
We have a number of individuals here tonight who were part of our community center advisory group who we started actually back, gosh, Daniel, we started back October a year ago, didn't we, on this project? And we thought about what we want in a facility and we looked at possible programming and we've had some iterations of the program potential and where we want to go on this thing, but this group has met throughout the winter and throughout the spring, coming up to this point where two weeks ago, we had an opportunity to look at three different renditions or three different options for us to choose from. And by far, this was head and shoulders unanimously above the other two options. What's really exciting about this, I think, is some of the presentation is when you walk in the front door, it's almost like an atrium and you look all the way through and you can see out the back door into Jack Warren Park. So it creates this wonderfully expansive area that gives you a real feel of place where community can gather. It's just going to be a really nice feeling facility. And we got the meeting rooms off, the big meeting rooms off to the left-hand side that can be partitioned down to three meeting rooms or one large meeting room with a capacity of...
About 215 or so at tables and chairs and probably close to 270 in seats.
Great. So those of you who have missed out on movie nights because it's rained, we'll have a place that you can come now and stay dry and watch our movies as well. I'm really excited about this. I want to extend to our community center advisory group our, the council's most sincere appreciation for all of your work. This has been a labor of love by everybody, council members, current and future have had a chance to put their fingers in this one. You know, you talk about sometimes facilities, a horse designed by a committee is usually a donkey. Well, this horse is a Mustang, and so we're very, very pleased to move forward with it. And so we will ask if the council members, if anyone wished to make a motion to approve this design?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Singer makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. And now, I guess, there's one more piece of business there. Okay, I think we're good. Keith?
Yeah.
You're ready to rock?
Yeah, we're ready. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll be hearing more from Keith in the months to come as we move closer on the design on this and as we get closer to really seeing this thing come out of the ground.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, did we just approve the Resolution 2019083?
We just approved...
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Walker was wanting to make sure.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Walker, that's what we did.
It's reading my face.
Very good. Okay, Hank, administrative reports.
Okay, we have upcoming events at Shalford Square and town holidays. The only thing I've got for you this evening is that the town hall will be closed, town will have a holiday, December 24th on Christmas Eve, December 25th on Christmas Day, and then moving forward on the 1st of January, offices will be closed for New Year's Day as well.
Very good. Okay. How about a recap of our items that we dealt with at our briefing, please?
We first considered and approved ordinance 2019057. This was amending the budget ordinance 2019001 in an amount of $1,373 to purchase $148... yeah, sorry, 148 18 gallon recycling bins. Next, we had two items for stormwater. We had the approval of ordinance 2019058, amending budget ordinance 2019001 in an amount of $30,000 to contract with Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments to map this town's stormwater infrastructure and to develop an online database to house all future data. And then secondly, we had Resolution 2019081 that the council approved, awarding the contract to PTRC in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to map the town's stormwater infrastructure. And finally, we considered and approved ordinance 2019059, amending budget ordinance 2019001 in an amount of $14,754 to budget for salaries and related costs of acting public works director.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that may not be aware, the council holds two meetings a month. One is the first Thursday, which is our briefing, and we have a detailed discussion of the issues that are going to come before us at tonight's meeting. But we also occasionally have action items that need our attention at the briefing. These three items that the manager just read are items that we took at our briefing, are actions that we took at our briefing. We report them out here because we want the public to know how we spent your money. So that's why we have them as part of our manager's report. And anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for you to come forward now during our public comment period. Share your thoughts with the council, anything that's on your mind, anything you'd like to share with us. Please come forward, state your name and address. Anybody have anything they wish to get off their chest? Oh, very good. You must be doing a good job. Yeah, okay. Very good. Dr. Sadler.
I'm Ken Sadler, 8519 Brook Middle Lane. Ms. Matt, I would like to voice my appreciation to the outgoing members of the council who had served four terms on the council. A year and a half or almost two years ago, or just over a year and a half ago, the charter was changed as a result of some concerns that the council had at the time regarding term limits, which were judged to be probably unconstitutional and in conflict with the state constitution. And at that time, it was, it seemed uncertain that we would have folks who would serve four terms and then step off the council. But this council has shown the great integrity to do what has been the tradition of the town since its inception and what was intended when the charter was developed. And in the spirit of that, I would like to say that I really appreciate what you all did that you didn't have to do, recognizing the traditions of the town and respecting the desires of the citizens at the time of creation of the town in 1991. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. Anybody else wish to speak? Come forward. Anyone at all? Very good. Council members, we're now at the point where you can make your final comments as council members, at least five of you.
Well, I could have been, when the filing period ended back in July, it's kind of like the sunset for us. For Robert and Sandra and Ed and I, we've been on it for eight years, and Fred has been with us for six years, Mike for six years, Dan Pugh was mayor for four, and Dr. Sadler's with us for four, and then Tom Lawson was with us for two, and Marcy for two. But I started to think about it and just started to reflect on all that we had, you know, been involved in. And I was like, well, that's really neat. And then I kept doing it, and then finally, man, I should write some of this stuff down. So I started writing it down, and I was like, wow, I forgot about that. And I wrote this down. So anyway, if you all will be so kind, what I'd like to do is just take a little stroll down memory lane and you guys chip in if you've, if you say anything, if you see anything or want to add something. So we came, and for the new council, this part hopefully will really resonate with you, might terrify you. We came and we did this, which you're going to do here right now, and it was great fun and we had great reception, and we all went home and celebrated the holidays. And then we came to January 2nd or 3rd, and we had our very first briefing as town council members. And so we went in and it was fine, it was a briefing, you know, the three of us had served on planning boards, so we were used to having briefings and that kind of stuff, no big deal. We get to the end of the meeting and the town manager says, oh, and by the way, I'm retiring, effective immediately. And we're like, I think he gave us 30 days. And all of a sudden, the next thing we learn is, hey, guess who's responsible for hiring the manager? That we are. So that spring, well, we do that, and then we, that spring, we've got to do budget and we've got to hire a manager, and we jump into it, and we were having meetings, I mean, we had two a month, and that first six months, we were having three and four a month. We were doing job interviews, we were doing budget, we were doing, it was incredible. So during that time, though, then other things came down the road. First thing that happened was, we got an opportunity, we had a very difficult relationship with the City County Utilities Commission, and we got, it was very, and it was getting really intense, and then we got a phone call that we might be able to buy some sewer capacity. And so we quickly formed a utilities commission. I think Fred was on that with Tom Lawson and I, and looked at all the options. We bought sewer capacity and said, hey, we want a service agreement with City County Utilities for future growth. And so we went ahead and got that going. And so then, it keeps getting better, so that's our first year. The second year, remember what happened? The bridge got hit out here on 421. And the same time the bridge got hit, the new property tax assessments came in, and I said, oh, and by the way, you guys are going to be short this much money in revenue now because the assessments have all dropped. And so we continued to roll up our sleeves and work on it. We got the new roundabout going, we got the bridge. Originally, DOT just wanted to repair it, which meant shutting it down for five months and then coming back later and rebuilding it and shutting it down again. And we were able to work with them and get them to do the whole thing in one shot. And we got Joyce Kravik and Julia Howard helped us get some gateway money so that we can make that bridge look like our own. And so you see that ours is a little different than everybody else's, that's really, thanks to them.
Medallions. We got the medallions.
And we got them, that took a long time to get the medallions.
Hank medallions.
That was an old business, that was an old business thing on our agenda for a long, long time. Then we had to confront the fact that we had a revenue shortfall. And so we rolled up our sleeves, and you know what a lot of municipalities were doing is what they call revenue neutral tax increase, which is still tax increase. And we said, no, we don't want to do that. And so we sharpened our pencils and we learned where we could cut and trim, and we decreased our sound staff and we decreased our spending. At the same time, over this time, we got, we went ahead and expanded, I think that same year, we expanded our coverage of police officers, of sheriffs, because we didn't have around-the-clock coverage at that time, so we did that. We got bulk side pack trash pickup, we funded the Nissan House project several times, we funded senior services, we commissioned a study for downtown stormwater system for the whole overlay district, we identified and started sewer design for the Great Wagon Road. We did get the service agreement, which has created a capital funds thing for sewer, which is constantly raising money for future sewer projects, and the Great Wagon Road one will be paid for by the time it gets started. We've, I'm losing track here, I don't want to leave anything out. Then we got the process started for a new roundabout down the road here, down at Robinhood in Vianna. Then we talked to the school about the new school over there, so we had design talks with them. We also did, in the midst of all of this, we made several extra mortgage payments on this building, which, that's a big deal because we only make two a year and they're $90,000 a pop. And so we made a few extra, and what that does is it sets the table so that when the community center comes on and is financed, this will be paid for. And so all of that with less revenue. And through the whole thing, and I don't know if you guys think of anything else, but through the whole thing, we maintained the same tax rate. But you know, then we came to the budget here at the end, our last budget time, and one of the things was, well, you know, we got an awful lot of stuff rolling here, did we kick the can down the road? So we asked Pam, who's not here tonight, to do a study and to just look at all the projects we've got going and the projected revenue and so on, and see, did we, we don't want to leave the, you know, new, next year's council kind of hanging. And she said, oh, no. She went out as far as five years and said, you guys are good. So that's what I've got, what do you have? It was a fantastic run. I can't believe all that we were able to accomplish. These guys right here are superstars, they're great people. You know, we have great debate, but what's been awesome in Lewisville, and I hope it's a tradition that goes on forever, is that we can disagree with each other on an issue but not take it personal, and we can still listen to what the other person's point of view is. And so we always, we always walked out of every meeting as good of friends as we were on the way in. And so it's a really sweet, sweet atmosphere, and the staff, we have the greatest staff without, hands down, I mean, they are just fantastic. And so, but, and then on top of that, what we really have that's great is our citizens. And so they're the ones that give us the privilege to be here, and it's been, it's been a wonderful ride. And I just, I want to thank you guys for just being so awesome to work with. These folks are superstars. Everybody in town ought to thank these guys when they see them for all the work they've done.
Thank you, Jeff.
Wow. Well, Jeff covered a lot of, a lot of ground there, but I think I'd be remiss in saying, first of all, in eight years, the amazing part of this town and what made all of us successful was the citizen input. When you look at our boards and committees, you look at our comprehensive plan, which is done every five years, it is, it is the plan of the citizens of this town. It makes our job easy. And I'm looking at Jane Welch, who has served on this council before, and Dr. Sadler and others, and I think they would probably reassure you that that's exactly how this works. So I thank the people in this town for all the sacrifices and your time and so forth because it's, those are volunteer boards, you spend a lot of your time doing that. I just wanted to say that I appreciate having you all pretend and the privilege to serve eight years. I have a grandmother that, excuse me, as I was growing up, as I took things out of their house or their garden or their tool shed, one thing she always said was, always leave, leave it in better shape than you found it. And I hope we've done that. And so, and I challenge that to the next council as well.
Amen.
I think the guys have summed it up well, but it has been a privilege for the last eight years, and I just appreciate everything each one of these guys have done, the council members who are coming on, they are part of... They are part of the volunteers that Ed spoke about. We've got some really great ones coming on who have served on several of our boards and committees for the last several years. So, they've got a lot ahead of them, and I appreciate those. But again, appreciate the citizens for giving us each an opportunity to come and serve and be a part of this. And so, thank you.
Well, I want to thank the citizens of Lewisville for allowing me to serve you for eight years. I have lived in Lewisville my whole life and seen a lot of changes from the little rural town that it was to a little bit of a bustling hustle now, but it's... It kept its small charm, and I think it always will. There'll always be changes, but I think they'll be for the best of Lewisville. But it's been a pleasure. Thank you again for allowing me to serve you.
Well, I too echo everything that has just been said. First and foremost, though, Lewisville is Lewisville because of you guys, the people, everybody. Being on council is just a sidebar, honestly, helping to make the right decisions, to do the right thing for you all, the people. And that's exactly what got me here, why I wanted to even initially run. And I just want to say thank you, too. It's been an experience. And for the new council, have an open mind, lead from your heart, but do it for the people. Thank you.
I've enjoyed serving with you guys. I really have. Six out of eight years, pretty good run. Again, hadn't really planned to say anything other than thank you for being yourselves. Again, echoing what Jeff said, sometimes we didn't see eye to eye on things, but we all had our eye focused on what was the right thing for the town. I truly believe that.
Very good. Council members, if you'll join me down in front of the podium here, say goodbye to your chairs. If you want to have any special moments with them alone, please do that now. Fabulous. Y'all come right around here. This would be great. Yeah. And you won't be this time either. Very good. I'd like to present these retiring council members with just a token of our appreciation for their work. It's very simple. Each one of them deserves a great deal of credit. I'll say that, you know, being mayor is a real interesting job because you kind of lose your own opinion, and you try to help the council arrive at consensus to move the town in the direction that we all feel is going to be in the best interest of our residents. This council has been a real joy to work with because they are smart, they are insightful, they have truly the best interests of our residents at heart. I think that no mayor could be any luckier than I am to have a council like this, also to have a staff like this. Together, when you think about the dynamics of those two groups and what they do every day for our residents and for our town, it really is pretty awesome. And that's an 18-year-old word, awesome. 18-year-old's word, awesome. I've learned this a little long. But the... You know, when you become a council member, it becomes a little different. You now see people in the grocery store who come up to you and talk to you about their garbage, and they talk to you about their potholes, and they talk to you about tax rates, and they talk to you about that stupid thing that you said on TV, and they talk to you about things that are important in their lives. As Mr. Franklin is often known for saying, "We got to pick up the garbage, we got to fix the roads, and we got to make sure you stay safe." And if we can do all of those most of the time, then we probably have done a pretty good job, and I think this council has done a really pretty outstanding job. So, with that, I want to make a couple of presentations this evening. Sandra Mock, who is our mayor pro tem. This is with the town's appreciation for serving as mayor pro tem from December 8, 2011 to December 12, 2019. Thank you, Sandra. Marcy Garman. Marcy, thank you so much for your service. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you, Mike.
Robert Green. Robert, thank you so much. I always appreciate your support. I know we're going to see you around the pool in the summertime. Ed Smith. Ed, thank you so much in your new role as chauffeur for all your grandkids. I know you're going to be busy, but please stop by and see us when you can.
Thanks, sir. I'll bring them by.
I'll bring them by. Once again, we are impressed when we can do great things here, but Mr. Zinger has an opportunity... This is not a political plug, it's just an observation. Mr. Zinger has an opportunity to potentially go on in service in the future in a different capacity, and we wish him well in that endeavor. Jeff, thanks so much for everything you've done, buddy. Picture of us all if you can, and those of you who have your cameras and want to post it up on Facebook, that would be great. Very good. I would now like to invite the elected... Newly-elected council. Ladies and gentlemen, you can move into obscurity. And I would like to invite our newly-elected council members to come forward, please. Very good. This always is a special time. This is an exceptional group of council members that are going to be serving you over the next two years. Two of them have served you before, Dr. Sadler and Jane Welch, and they have distinguished themselves as council members in the past. Council member Jean Marie Foster has distinguished herself as the chairman of your planning board for the last several years. Council member David Smitherman has distinguished himself as the chairman of our Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Franklin, of course, has served us the last six years on the council, and you know him well. And our newest member, Melissa Hunt, who impressed me when I was first introduced to her, not only how thoughtful she is, but just how smart she is. So, I think this cadre of folks that will be serving you for the next two years is going to... They will make you very proud. With that, Judge Williamsy Wood, you'll please come up and administer our oath of office.
We need somebody to hold a Bible.
Pardon?
We need somebody to hold our Bibles.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, that's true. So, if you are here to hold a Bible for one of these individuals up here, please come forward and stand with them.
This is for the mayor, and this is your copy. That's just for you to read, and then these are all in alphabetical order.
Just on, yeah. How are you? How's your bride?
Hard. Rough.
I'm thinking...
We're doing our best.
All right.
Yeah, it's all alphabetical order.
Everybody, we're going to swear the mayor in first, and then we'll swear the members of the council.
This is the late Fannie Stroud.
I'm sorry.
Left hand on the Bible.
Your left hand.
Don't put it on.
That doesn't really matter. Actually, let's swap places. That's how it works.
You want to repeat after me, or just me say?
Whatever you prefer, Judge.
I and state your name.
I, Mike Horn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor.
And I will faithfully discharge my office as duties of mayor.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God. Good long and prosper.
You're the chair of Louisiana. Once again, congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for your service. We'll sign that in just a minute. Okay. I'm sorry, but I've got to... You left right here. Not moving as good as I used to. But it goes with the D. You've got to do it, don't lose your scope. And I'll tell you this, the spare parts are a lot better than the old ones.
Excuse me, Judge, before you start, let me give a little instruction to everyone else if you don't mind. You each have two copies of your oath of office at your position. Please sign both of those copies, if you will, after you take your oath, and leave them at the position. I will pick them up when you're done. Thank you.
Okay. All of you will please place your left hand upon your head. Here's your right hand. Hold that up for her side. I and please state each name.
I, Ken Sadler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
So, help me, God. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your service. I'm glad to do it.
Always good to see you.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Ms. Walker, will you give us instructions on how you want us to proceed up here?
As soon as everyone is done, they return. Give us a few minutes for us to sit.
Got you. Okay, that's right, because now we adjourn, don't we? After we do this, we...
Congratulations.
Take care, Nancy.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a brief recess here to have a reception on and recognizing our previous council members and our new council members. Without objection, we'll adjourn this meeting, but we'll come back and re-adjourn the new council here momentarily. Without objection, we're adjourned.
And if you will, may give us a few...
Very good. Let us call the order. The first council meeting of your newly-elected Lewisville Town Council. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. How do your seats feel? Comfortable? No adjustment needed? Everything is good shape? I'm saying, well, it's good to see your faces up here, and we look forward to the adventure that's ahead. Council members, we have an agenda in front of you. We will do our first roll call, and as customary, we ask each council member to just introduce themselves at this time.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Jane Welch. Happy to be here.
Hey, everyone. I'm David Smitherman.
Hi, Ken Sadler.
And I'm Mike Horn.
Melissa Hunt.
I'm Steel Fred Franklin.
Jean Marie Foster.
Very good. Council members, I do want to remind you that your microphones are always on, and so just keep that in mind as you have maybe sidebar conversations. There is an agenda in front of you. Ms. Walker, there haven't been any changes or additions?
No, but they'll get used to it.
Yes, they will. Very good. With that, council members, we'll accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Took me a while to get people's names and hearing. I believe that was Mrs. Hunt that made the motion, Mr. Smitherman that made the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is our agenda this evening. As customary, one of our first order of business is to select the mayor pro tem. Mayor pro tem, of course, is an important position in our town because they serve in the absence of the mayor. At times when there are events that the mayor can't attend, they attend those and represent the town. And should I get hit by a bus, they'll sit in this chair and run the meetings. So, with that, council members, do we have any nominations for mayor pro tem?
Mr. Mayor, it is my pleasure to nominate Ms. Jean Marie Foster to become mayor pro temporary of the town.
I'll second that.
It's a nomination on the floor by Dr. Sadler, or second by Councilman Franklin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ms. Foster, if you'll go down in front, Ms. Walker will give you the oath of office. And while we're doing that, Stacy, if you'll pass around that document for everybody to sign. This is a proclamation that we'll be considering later, requiring your signature.
There are two pages. You'll need to sign both pages, one for our records.
Uh-oh, I think I got the second page.
No, this is the record.
It's going to be my guide. Do we need to sign both pages?
Yes. One is for our records, the other we can give.
Okay. I'll stumble through it then.
Yes. Just as a point of interest, she said, "Do I have to do this again? Regardless of the office that you hold, you will always need to take an oath."
20 seconds into the office, you already just trying to change the rules.
And I will have a right of... I'll need this to be behind me. I, Jean Marie Foster, do solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support and maintain, that I will support and maintain, the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as mayor pro tem.
And my office as mayor pro tem.
So, help me, God. Now, by the powers vested in me by the general statutes of North Carolina, I declare that the council member above named as mayor pro tem has been administered the oath of office and is due at the form to hold the office of mayor pro tem for the town of Lewisville this the 12th day of December 2019 by Joyce Seemack Walker, the Republic, and Town clerk for the town of Lewisville. And when you sign both copies, then you will pay the... Now, take your...
Council members, in preparation for our committee appointments, I circulated to each of you a list of those committees and asked if you had a preference to serve, I think, to indicate your first and second preference. What I attempted to do was try to get everybody into at least their first and/or their second preference of committees. These are all organizations and committees that the town requires representation of. They are advisory oftentimes to the council. They represent the council as part of these organizations. The appointments that we'll be considering this evening, we have two to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Urban Planning Transportation Advisory Committee. The nominations will be for myself as the primary, Dr. Sadler as the alternate. The Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Delegates, that's an organization made up of all the elected officials from the Piedmont Triad area. Our nominations for that, our council member Fred Franklin is the primary. Alternate is Ms. Melissa Hunt. The Special Project Review Committee and Grants, as we generally refer to them, this is the group of council that meets, talks about those requests that are presented to us for funding from Lewisville-area organizations. Our nominations for that are David Smitherman, Jane Welch, and Melissa Hunt. The Lewisville Utilities Committee, as you heard Jeff reference earlier, the Utilities Committee is working, or has worked, to develop a sewer plan, one of the most sexy topics that we work in. But their work is as needed, but it's very important work for the town because it's something that we have a lot of money to do and a lot of requests to do it, but generally speaking, not enough money to do all the requests that we'd like. So, this committee is important to us. The nominees to that are Jean Marie Foster, Fred Franklin, staff members Hank Perkins, Stacy Talbert, and Ryan Moser. Our Administrative Committee, this is the group that works with the town man...
We will all be ex officio.
Ex officio are the council members, yes. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. The Administrative Committee, which we kind of refer to as our management group, works with the mayor or works with the manager on his performance goals. We meet several times during the year to provide guidance and answer questions and make sure that we're all on the same page. make sure that we're all on the same page. That's an important group. The members of that being nominated are Mike Horn, Ken Sadler, and Jean Marie Foster. Our Community Center Coordinating Group, you heard earlier this evening when we moved on to our architect, a preferred design, and gave them the approval to begin their costing. The members nominated for that are Mike Horn, David Smitherman, Jane Welch, staff people Hank Perkins, Stacy Talbert, and Ryan Moser. The Mayor's Roundtable is a group of Forsyth County mayors of all the municipalities in Forsyth County that we will meet quarterly to share those ideas about our communities that we think will be helpful to each other. The nominees for that are Mike Horn as the primary and Melissa Hunt as the secondary. Both of us will be attending those meetings on a quarterly basis. Council members, unless there are other suggestions or nominations you wish to make from the floor, I'd like to ask that you accept these nominations by unanimous acclamation.
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion.
Second.
Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much and we look forward for those opportunities for you all to serve. Some exciting times for the triads, some exciting times for the town. Ms. Walker, you have our schedules for 2020. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Yes.
We have the privilege from time to time to issue proclamations recognizing groups and organizations that provide service or otherwise serve the town and our community. We are recognizing this evening through proclamation for your consideration. The North Carolina Armed Forces Community Covenant, and this is presented to us by the American Legion. Post 522, Commander Norman Shea will come up and accept that and I will read it and then we will accept a motion to approve and, second. And Mrs. Walker took my copy, so I have nothing to read. I do have some. This is the town of Louisville Proclamation 2019005, Armed Forces Community Covenant. We, the elected leadership of the town of Louisville, recognize the sacrifice and commitment that veterans, active military, National Guard, and reserve military servicemembers, as well as their families, have made and are continuing to make every day in assignments and deployments around the world. We are committed to building strong communities through recognition and support of our men and women in uniform and their families. We will work to create a strong relationship between the community and the military personnel who live and work nearby. We will strive to educate all men, women, and children in cities and towns across this great country of the value and strength that comes from being servicemembers, veterans and their families living in their communities. We will assist community leaders at all levels of development program and policies in support of our nation's veterans, military personnel, and their families. Finally, we will support and promote and implement the nationwide efforts of the Armed Forces Community Covenant program. We support those who serve. A resolution or a proclamation presented to you, Louisville Town Council, on December 12, 2019. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Hunt makes the motion, was it Mrs. Welch? Very good, that makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you for all your due.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that the town does for us, particularly our memorial and the park over there. We've grown to 163 members now.
Oh, wow.
And we are very excited about our new community sign. Thank you.
Your copy. I'll get this, because this is our copy. Yes. Miss? All right.
I can't read it upside down there.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Walker, we're to you for our meeting schedules.
Okay. I think everyone received a copy of the upcoming schedule for 2020 and I hope you had an opportunity to take a look at it. This is the schedule for town council as well as all the boards and committees. Do I have any corrections or changes? And if not, mayor, if you will accept, have someone to accept, that will be fine.
Very good. We've all had a chance to look at this. I hope we marked our calendars. We're going to have a busy year. Our boards and committees are going to have a busy year. Council members, any questions for Mrs. Walker? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
I'm sad.
Just takes a little while, we'll get into it here. The motion was made by Mr. Smitherman. The second was made by Mr. Franklin, Mr. Sadler. Since he's closest to me, Mr. Sadler gets the second on that one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's our schedule for this year.
As noted, under that information, the 2020 Development Review Schedule has been prepared by Ms. Talbert and is prepared based on the actual meeting schedule, so that will now go into effect also.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Hank, upcoming events, please.
Yes, as previously mentioned, in the first meeting, we will be closed on December 24th and 25th for town holidays in observance of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then again on New Year's Day, January 1st. And then, under manager's report, I will also say that new council orientation will be held on Monday, December 16th, that is the 16th, Monday coming up, at 6:30 PM in the second-floor large conference room at Town Hall.
I'm sorry, that's a typo, at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
6 o'clock.
Continue on, Mr. Manager.
Okay, we're at staff reports. Madam Clerk.
This is just a reminder to the new council, we do our board and committee appointments in March as opposed to doing them whenever you're seated. So this will give you an opportunity to either meet some of the people on your boards and committees and, you know, know who they are before you start to appoint or reappoint them. The next item, there's a statutory requirement for ethics training and that's been removed from the class that you just went to last weekend. Now they have announced that it will be available sometime in January, so as soon as we get that, I will let you know. I've also given you information on the one that you have to adopt, so that I believe I sent out to you last week.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Walker? I do want to call our attention to, a nice letter I received from our fire chief, Darren Needham, writing about the fire department would like to thank our own Stacy Talbert for her recent assistance and they're preparing a grant with the North Carolina Forest who serves. Stacy was instrumental in obtaining the necessary information that resulted in a grant award for our department. They received a grant for two new portable radios to enhance our communication abilities before, during, and after emergent needs in our community. So Stacy, it's always nice when organizations that we work with can reach out to us and we can reach out to them and make wonderful things happen. Thank you for your efforts in this regard.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are at the, on opportunity, the second opportunity this evening, but the first opportunity in front of this council, to share your thoughts, anything that you would like to share with the council. This is our opportunity to listen to you, hear what's on your mind, and I ramble on like this quite often to give people ample opportunity to make that decision whether they want to come forward or not. Okay. No one coming forward? Very good. I do also want to call our attention, if you have not gone to the town's Facebook page and seen the Louisville video, prepared by our student leadership committee and assisted by Ryan Reedy, it is a hoot. That's Louisville, Town of Louisville, Facebook page, and go on and see it. It's a lot of fun, it's set to music, and it's an original song about our town. I couldn't quite make out all the words, so maybe we'll have the words on a sheet for next meeting so we can all stand and sing.
The words are reprinted on the Facebook post as well.
Good.
So you can read along with it. And it is also available, it's uploaded to the YouTube page, which is accessible through the town's website.
Okay, very good. Well, congratulations, I believe, Ms. Walker and Ms. Orell. I believe you are the two coordinators of our student leadership committee.
We coordinate, however, this was put together by our events planner, the other Stacy, Ms. Stacy Howard.
Very good. Well, please pass along our congratulations, sir. It's a great piece of work.
I will certainly do it.
Hank, you do have, we have put a piece of white paper in front of council members, you just tell them what it is.
That's correct. In the little slip of paper, each of you have a new email address for the Town of Louisville and your business, and also there is a web address for which you can type in on a web browser to go in there. You use your email address and the password that I've provided you and that will give you access to it. You should have iPads for you probably early in January. And they will also be preloaded with the email addresses and the, I guess, the email access right there on those iPads as well.
And as future reference, please do not ask Mrs. Walker for assistance.
Take anything, break. That's right.
Council members, any thoughts before we adjourn?
Welcome aboard, guys. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Agreed. Excited.
Very good. Well, folks, on behalf of the town council, the town staff, let me wish you and your family the greatest of holidays, most wonderful time of the year. Hug each other closely and tell each other how much you love them because this is a great time for us to share those things that are most important to us. Best wishes for a prosperous new year as well, which is just around the corner. I think it's going to mean great things for Louisville and our residents. We're real excited. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Foster makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Moser, congratulations, we made it through a full meeting on Facebook without a breakdown. We're adjourned.